Would the Council please come order? All the roll.
Burnson, you're going to go with the command of Holden, Mr. Kowski, the county attorney, the lieutenant, the supervisor, Walters, Peralos, and members present in their form, Mr. President.
Okay, let me point out that this is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the fifth day of January, the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel thirty-five, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Zakowski moves. Mr. Padilla, second. There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number four, the applicant consents to continuance to January nineteenth.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number five, applicant consents to continuance to January twelfth.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Item number ten is confirmation of city official Dr. Sharon G. Watson to the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families for the term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and two.
Would you?
John.
Thank you. Thank you very much, David. Happy New Year. Item number ten.
Yes, I'm Sharon Watson.
This is the appointment of Dr. Watson. Any discussion on this?
Yes, I'd like to say that I've had a long relationship with her over at the county and think that it's just fabulous that she's willing to be at the county and at the city and be everywhere else. She's a marvelous advocate for children, very knowledgeable and skilled individual and working with groups from all over the city and the county, and I think we should consider ourselves very fortunate to have her. And I move for a done.
Okay, with that ringing endorsement, Ms. Goldberg moves. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Dr. Watson, you've been confirmed. We want to thank you for serving the city, and we'll send it forthwith. Next item.
Items for which public hearings, excuse me, items noticed for public hearings.
Do we have some quiet over here? Go ahead.
Required public hearing items, item number one.
Is there anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number one? Ms. Goldberg, this is your district.
I'd like to move it.
Hello, Johnny.
How are you? Ms. Goldberg moves. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Fourth with, please.
We'll send that forthwith. We did send ten forthwith, didn't we? Okay, next item.
Item number two is also required public hearing item.
We have a John Mulhamand wants to be heard on this one.
Yes, good morning. My name is John Mohammed, and I represent Capital Vision Equities. I believe council member Rudy Savornic will be introducing a motion to clarify language in the CPC report concerning a Q condition and density with regard to a seventy-eight unit housing development. So if I could defer for now and perhaps have the council.
Okay, then we'll just call it special.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item.
Item number three is also required public hearing.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number three? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items six through nine.
Any special by council members? Six through nine?
Yes, Chief wants to call item six special.
Pay attention, Laura. Okay, we have six and nine called special, seven and eight. Prepare the roll on those two. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items eleven through thirty-one.
All right, anybody in the audience wants to be heard on any of those items, eleven through thirty-one?
We're not used to government work.
Anybody want to be heard? Seeing none, we have no cards. The public hearing is closed on all those. Any specials by council members? Any specials by council members? Eleven through thirty-one. Any specials?
We've got a roll.
If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Do you have the closed sessions? Do you wish to hold on the desk?
Leave them on the desk.
Item number two is also still on the desk.
I will go to item six. Mrs. Chick.
Yes, Mr. President, colleagues, I called the special to draw your attention to the fact, colleagues, that the city's workers' compensation program is a program that is very much on the path to out of control. We have had, as I have looked at this in Governmental Efficiency Committee and asked for more information, we are finding out a couple of very dismaying things. One, it's very difficult to get the information and to get our arms around what are the very real costs to the taxpayers, to the general fund, to the city of Los Angeles. And two, what should we do about these escalating costs? Next week, you will have a report from the Governmental Efficiency Committee recommending some essential first steps to take. But I especially want to draw your attention to this problem because we are absolutely going to have to bite the bullet in this year's budget and realize that we have to put some front money into this program in order to start, to contain, and eventually reduce the costs. And if you read the report before you, you will see that already in this fiscal year, we are facing some expenditures that exceed what the estimates were. And I have reports that I will be making available to you that shows that this current year's fiscal costs are somewhere over a hundred and twenty million dollars to our general fund. And that excludes certain city staff costs that are the ones I'm telling you are hard to get an arm around because there is no one single point of responsibility on this issue. So I look forward to partnering with my colleagues and with city staff to figure out how to get a handle on this problem and to turn around from escalating costs to contain costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chick, for that. Anyone else want to be heard? If not, prepare the roll on item number six. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. The next item.
Item number nine called special by council member Walters.
Mrs. Walters.
Yes, this is a special parking, a preferential parking district. I have opposed all the others that have come to the council, and I am opposing this one.
Mrs. Galenter.
Mrs. Walters is free to vote as she feels she should. The purpose of this preferential parking district is it's an area of the city that is located adjacent to the county, and on the county side of the line is a series of clubs and restaurants which has produced a rather unfortunate overflow into a single-family residential zone. And these are not facilities that are short of parking, it's just that it's easier for a lot of people to park in front of the private residences, and then when they come back late at night to pick up their cars and go home, they've been having a very good time and they're very happy, and it's very noisy, and the residents have asked for some protection. Because the clubs are in the county and not in the city, the city's equipment to deal with this is somewhat limited, and that is the reason for the preferential parking district, and I would ask your support for the only tool we've got to try to protect our residents from the land use patterns on the county side of the line.
Okay, and we have item number nine before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ayes.
Let the record show, Mrs. Walters wanted to vote no, and we will allow that to happen. Next item, we're going to go back to item number two? Yes. Mr. Savornic, you want to explain this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Colleagues, we do have a motion two A which has been circulated, so I would like to move item number two as amended by two A.
Objections to the amendment. Seeing none, then the item number two as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on that. Next item.
Mr. President, I believe you have a special one motion.
Haven't seen it.
The city attorney is going to make it.
I think we're going to do it orally because the time came in so short. That's the closed session.
Okay.
On, this is regarding Porter et al. versus City of Los Angeles. This is the case of the building on Barrington and Olympic that was damaged in the earthquake. We received, the city attorney's office received yesterday afternoon settlement offer. We have trials starting on Monday, and therefore the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda. Also, we would then ask that the council move that we go into closed session pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine A.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
The matter is before us, and we'll go into closed session on that. Yes.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
We have no cards. Anyone in the audience wants to be heard on public comment? Seeing none, the public comment period is closed. We are going to go into executive session, so all those people not involved with the executive session, please leave the council chamber. Sergeant, would you see if you can remove these people that don't belong in here? Here. What's on the desk?
Motions for posting and referral.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Council has several excuses. Council member Burnson requests to be excused Friday, January twenty-first, personal business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
Council member Padilla requests to be excused Friday, January twenty-eighth, personal business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
Council member Burnson, excuse me, council member Goldberg requests to be excused Wednesday, January twelfth, to leave at eleven-thirty, city business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
Council member Burnson requests to be excused second Friday of each month, city business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
And council member Walters requests to be excused Friday, January seventh, to leave at noon. A motion is required.
Mr. Savornic moves unanimous vote. I think we, is that it?
That clears the desk.
Point out that it's the first time we didn't have Rudy Savornic ask it. Okay, we have some adjourning motions, so would everyone please stand? We have, let me ask that we adjourn in memory of Cheryl Meshack, who was an assistant city attorney who died on December twenty-fifth after an extended battle with cancer. She started in the city attorney's office in nineteen seventy-eight, was a graduate of Howard University where she obtained a bachelor's of art degree, and USC where she got her law degree. I'd ask we adjourn in her memory.
All members.
All members. Also, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Fernando Bermitz, who was a longtime employee of the Department of Transportation. He survived by two sisters, both worked for the Department of General Services. And I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of Carl Hartneck, who was the, began his career at Security Pacific Bank as a seventeen-year-old messenger and rose through the ranks to lead one of the largest financial institutions in California. He retired as chairman of the Security Pacific Bank in nineteen eighty-two. Let me point out that he was offered a scholarship to USC when he was seventeen years old, but he couldn't do it because he had to help support the family, and then he later became the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the university.
How about that?
Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Salvador Rivera, aged forty-one, and his twelve-and-a-half-year-old son Abraham, who were killed when a dash bus went out of control and hit their van, which was parked on Vermont Avenue. You've probably read about this Tuesday, December the fourteenth. Sons Armando and Carlos were also in the van, but they were able to jump out and survive. Salvador Rivera died at the scene, and Abraham was pronounced dead at the hospital. Salvador was a loving and devoted father who did everything for his children. He was born in Huanaato, Mexico, where many family members still reside. He was a very happy person who loved to joke, he enjoyed music and dancing. The son Abraham was an ace soccer player who dreamed of being a sports TV caster. He also loved to draw and write and cared deeply about social issues, especially about immigrants in the United States. They are survived by Isabel Rivera, the widow, and other children, Luis Armando, nine, Carlos, seven, Myra, twenty-one, Salvador, seventeen, and Myra's daughter Isaura, two and a half, and a niece, Miriam, who was raised by Salvador. Also, Salvador is survived by nine brothers and sisters. They've had an opportunity to meet and work with the family and the children who are receiving counseling that were in the car and saw this happen to their father and brother. It's a very tragic case, and we wish the family the best in their hours of grief.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, this is another sad case, Jennifer Lamblett Menken. She was fifty-four years old and was the Hollywood area manager for the city library. She passed away in Tanzania while she and her husband, recently married, Ray, were climbing Mount Kilimanjaro. She collapsed at the nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-three foot mark at the top of the mountain after complaining of breath bleeding, breathing problem. She had married her husband just recently in nineteen ninety-eight, and the two were taking part in the millennium climb that served. taking part in the millennium climb that served as a belated honeymoon. She began work as a librarian at San Pedro branch in nineteen seventy-three, then promoted to senior librarian at Wilmington branch, and most recently as manager of the Hollywood branch. She was described by her coworkers extraordinarily intelligent and a hard-working and caring public servant. Certainly, she's missed by them, and they have some kind of a special program with her colleagues, grief because it's really tragic to them and bereavement.
I'd like to be a co-presenter on that. I just heard about that yesterday.
All members. Mr. Wax.
Yes, I'd just like to be a co-presenter on Carl Hartneck. He's someone I really respected tremendously and was extremely fond of. I first met him when he was not only in addition to the bank, but he was the director of the Museum of Contemporary Art, and it was really interesting at a difficult point in time for the museum, although he was not there because of a passion for art, he was there because he thought it was important to the city, that it was a civic institution, and he did more to keep it together and make it vital and healthy and gain support from the downtown and from the general community because of its importance to the city as a whole, and he made a great contribution in that, as long, of course, with SC and any number of other activities that he was involved with. He's really a fine man, and he leaves his wife, Roberta, and I'll give the.
Yeah, his wife of fifty-seven years and two sons, I think. But also, he wanted to save the downtown area, and he built the Security Pacific Bank in the redevelopment area, so he was a great person for the city of Los. Call the roll. The council is adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel Thirty-Five, your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.